So 2018 regulatory updates and other incentives.
Yes, good evening. So I went, I actually went back to my lettering days, so I was able to do that. Took me like ten tries, I think the S's got better as I went. So anyway, so we do have, I just want to give you a quick update in what, where things are right now. We're kind of in the planning development office calling 2018 the implementation year. And the reason why is because we got master plan done. The city council created an energy committee. We're actually doing a membership push right now, and you might have seen the article in the newspaper this morning that we're teaming up with a local group. We're helping each other in various aspects, but we're looking for members for the energy committee, and we're trying to make a concerted effort on that. Rules of procedure, done. Now, what we want to do is dive into land use regulations. So what that means is, I'm going to skip over here, reviewing everything that we have, I have priorities for these, and these are well-founded priorities. First, I want to talk about the site plan regulations. I'm not going to check any of these off, but maybe I will in the future. I cleared this with DeForest. She said it was a weird metaphor.
Analogy.
Analogy. Is as if the site plan regulations go through the situation of always a bridesmaid, never a bride. We have talked about site plan regulations and updating them for a couple of years now, but something always comes by and supersedes them. I want to get this done. So that's, that's why it's at the top of the list, is that we have a draft site plan regulation. I think we should, we should come back and work on it with some diligence and get it done. And I think it would be a fairly quick process relatively, because the majority of you folks here have gone through it at least once. And I'd like to take, take a couple of minutes, make sure everything's consistent right now, get it to you folks for discussion, and start the process, which might take one meeting, might take ten meetings, but I want to hash it out with the current sitting planning board so that we can update those site plan regulations. This is what I consider to be a companion, well, they're co-equal companions. The rules of procedure and the site plan regulations work together. Now that we have the rules of procedure done, getting to the site plan regulations will be a very important step. And we do have some fairly important pieces to that that need to be addressed. And I could, I could really go pretty far on that one, but I'll just say, the new regulations do streamline some processes and some review. It clarifies and makes better the existing processes and helps further define areas, gray areas that we've run into in the past. So, just like the rules of procedure, these will, it's basically a revamp of what the site plan regs are today.
Yep.
Just before you go on to the next one.
Yep.
Wasn't in our packet, so for, to refresh my memory, what, what is the email with the latest version of the site plan regs? Because I know, maybe it's already been two years, at least a year. We did a lot of work, and then it kind of went by the wayside, as you said, but...
Right.
So are you going to email us again, the latest version, or...
I was thinking we'd put it in the next packet as a hard copy for everyone.
Okay.
Just, yeah, it could be emailed. I just, hard copy just makes it sort of level for everyone, but I can email out copies as well.
If you can email them as well, that'd be great.
Okay. But yeah, it'll be a good process to dive back into them. Honestly, I think it, I think I switched away from site plan regs in the middle of, actually when master plan updates came up, but also accessory dwelling units revisions came up. So that's, that's going to be something, I hope that we can check this off. This will be, this process right here is strictly at the planning board level. The planning board reviews, structures, and adopts the site plan regulations. It doesn't go any further. It is a regulatory tool for the planning board, and the planning board approves it. So that's that. Subdivision regulations, similarly, it is a planning board tool, land use regulation. The subdivision regulations, that's a broader picture thing that, as you recall from the master plan process, community housing is a really big topic. You know, the availability of housing, affordability of housing, quality of housing, lifestyle impacts, economic development benefits, population benefits, amenity benefits. So this, this is what I'm calling subdivision regulations, really covers housing in the land use regulations. Right now, I am investigating grant opportunity so we can get technical assistance to get this done. And that would be, basically the grant would help fund a consultant to do the work and increase capacity for the city. So that would be something, if, if we're successful with the grant application, there are a lot of ifs in there, including going to city council, but there, if and if and if the grant application is submitted and approved, and we get a consultant to do the work, we'd have about a year to get that work done. And I think that's a major benefit to the community. I looked at subdivision regulations, as best I can tell, they were last amended 70s, 80s. There might have been minor amendments since then, but the bulk of the subdivision regulations is almost older than me. And that's, that's something that we really need to keep up on. We don't see subdivisions of a massive scale happening right now. That's not to say subdivisions won't happen in the near future, and we need to take this time to craft some good regulations. So that's, that's why I think this is an important time. We've just finished the master plan, we have the implementation going, and we need to proceed with this. So that's where the housing and land use or subdivision regulations are going. Now we've got the, what I see is the top-hitting items on the zoning ordinance updates. This is going to be a process that's going to be sprinkled throughout. I think with the site plan regulations, while we work on this, I'll have the opportunity to work on these. There are four different pieces to the zoning ordinance that I feel are, after my own review and assessment, these are the top-hitting things. Now, I'll tell you why. Housekeeping is a catch-all. There are certain things we run into day-to-day when we do the zoning ordinance interpretation, or we deal with a question or request on zoning issues, and we say, huh, that doesn't match up, or huh, I have to interpret because this is vague, or the zoning regulations are hard for people to use. Either there are difficult cross-references made, or just some confusion terminology. This housekeeping section is to help clarify the zoning ordinance without any substantial changes. And so I see this as something that covers the zoning ordinance and helps it become a better document, become a better regulation. That's going to, that may come in different stages, but we already have a substantial list of items for that, that, many of them are already in a draft form. The next one is agriculture. And I, it can be agricultural uses, but I got lazy, so that's why it stops at agriculture. The agricultural uses, as you may recall, there had been some cases recently about agritourism, and, and there's also some laws that establish the state of New Hampshire as an agricultural state, so that an agricultural use, in certain cases, preempts local zoning. And there are certain circumstances and conditions where that can be clarified, and so what I'm thinking is our zoning ordinance needs to clarify those situations. And that's, I could go through examples if you like. The fundamental thing is that we want to be sure that, that the zoning ordinance is undeniably clear that a tightly-knit neighborhood doesn't have a pig farm in it, so that, so that that kind of use is in an appropriate location to reduce nuisance and property maintenance issues. These agricultural regulations will rely heavily on UNH cooperative extension guidelines, but it will also need to respond to what the city feels is necessary for certain neighborhoods and certain zoning districts. So we've had interpretations in the past, we've had, we've had zoning enforcement in the past, we've had complaints in the past, where when we look at the zoning ordinance, we've had to make an interpretation that is a little bit in the gray area, but we feel it was a good interpretation. What I'd like to do is eliminate that gray area and make it absolutely clear, this is what it is. It's not only for us in interpretation, the city in defending its interpretation, it's also for property owners, being able to understand what they can do with their property, or before they get the property, what they can do with the property. We've had a number of people saying, I would like to move into Claremont, I'm looking at this property, can I have goats? That kind of thing. And that's where we've had to look at the ordinance and make interpretations. I'd love to be able to look at the ordinance and say, well, the ordinance says two goats, that's fine. Something like that. But, or in some, some cases, six hens and no roosters. I think most of the chicken complaints we receive are related to roosters, not hens. So that's some of the clarification. We will also incorporate language about agritourism, when it's appropriate, when it requires further review, if it's, if at any time it is not permitted. And that will be also consistent with recent court rulings and state law, so that we are consistent with current state of practice and current with state law.
So may I ask a question? So when various departments are faced with these questions that are, the answers are not clearly outlined in the ordinances, and some interpretation has to happen, do those questions ever get percolated up to the various boards for clarity? Because, or to the city council, because that would warrant a review of that ordinance, because it's not sufficient, for whatever reasons?
Well, that's why we're talking about right now. And, and the interpretation process is left to city staff.
Okay.
So along with that question, what oversight does the state have with its requirements for what each town's regulations have to start at a base level?
Superior Court. Appeals and successful or unsuccessful appeals.
And with each one of those...
Actually, starting with the zoning board, then goes to Superior Court.
Okay. So with each one of those pieces there, the state must have what they think each town should have as a minimum for site plan regulations. Is that what we start with?
Oh, well, with site plan regulations...
But I'm, and I'm talking about all of them.
There are, there are recommended ordinances. I mean, we're so far along on this, I think we continue with what we have. I think we have a good product in draft form right now.
Yep.
Subdivision regulations, I'm looking to, there are model ordinances for all these, but really what we do on a practical level, in the last, I don't know, 15 years of working on stuff like this, I've always gone to other communities to see what they do, because that's, usually it proves out what's been working well, what hasn't. But you go with municipal organizations, planning organizations, planning professionals, colleagues. So that's, that's how you might vet what appropriate practices for site plan or subdivision regulations. Zoning ordinance is very much strongly based on state law and, in some cases, case law, if it hasn't gotten to state law, you know, to be codified in state law yet.
So then to Charlene's question, you can rely on what the state laws have to say for certain...
Oh, yes. Well, there, there is that. I mean, we do have, so in an interpretation, and that's, that's a fair point, the, the process of interpreting the zoning ordinance does necessarily include making sure what is in the zoning ordinance is consistent with state law.
You go.
So that if there's a gap, we then defer to state law. If, if for some reason our ordinance is contrary to state law, and state law says if there's a contradiction, state law precludes, you know, prevails, then we have to go with state law. The accessory dwelling unit law is one example.
Yep.
If we sat back and did nothing last year with the ADU ordinance, state law would have come in and wiped away any of our zoning related to ADU, and we would have had to go with the state law's language. What we did with that was, we used the state law as the principal guidance and structure for our ordinance, and then we peppered in and incorporated certain aspects of land use regulations that we felt was appropriate for accessory dwelling units in Claremont. So we put that local flavor in there. And that's the, that's what we look to do with any of these updates. With agricultural uses, we would do the same thing. And this would be part of the process, is that we have a draft, and we'd make sure that it made sense through public hearing process, as we've done before at the planning board. And we publicly notice it, go through a couple of drafts, then it goes to city council. When we're talking zoning ordinance, after the planning board is done with it and has a final draft, it goes to city council for another series of public hearings and adoption if it's, if the city council supports it. So that's how the zoning changes go. So moving on from this to signs, our sign ordinance will need to be updated. There was a Supreme Court case that requires it to be updated, and that's something that we have, let's just say, we had it pretty much done until the Supreme Court yielded their, rendered their decision. And that's now on the list for a review and amendment. We find that signs, I'll just tell you, I'll be totally honest with you, sign ordinances are pain.
Yep.
Are just a pain, but they're necessary, and we need to make sure it works well. So that's, that's why, that's a priority. Finally, with the flood zone regulations, we have recommendations how we can improve our existing flood zone regulations. These are overlay districts in the zoning ordinance. They cover the 100-year flood event, and it's, so the state flood, sorry, the, yeah, State Flood Plane Manager at what is now the Office of Strategic Initiatives, used to be Office of Energy and Planning. OSI has the State Flood Plane Manager. They had in the past done a review of our flood ordinance and recommended changes. To our knowledge, those changes have not been incorporated. So given that this is a fairly, fairly finite change with a state agency recommending the changes, so that our ordinance is kept up to date with federal regulations, flood plane regulations, we would do well to put that at the top of our list as well. And we can, we'll dig into the details of this, but it's, I think there is some definition changes, some procedural changes, and a couple of clarifications, as I recall, in that, in that update. So that is our, that's, that's what we're doing with land use regulations right now. I put it on one sheet of paper, but it's going to take a little while to do. I would expect that the site plan regulations themselves, even though they are mostly done and we can get it, get it done soon, I suspect we probably won't be finished with that until June. And then we step into, you know, if we proceed with the housing work, I would suggest that we, I, I would suggest that the planning board assign a steering committee, and that steering committee should, considering the age of, you know, the newness of the master plan and the familiarity of the group that I'm about to suggest, I would suggest that the subcommittee for the housing chapter be invited to be the steering committee for these housing regulation updates. Because that, we have a mix of folks that are involved in, you know, low to moderate income housing, a realtor, a member of the planning board. I would also invite a member of the conservation commission to join that steering committee. And again, this is all conditional. If we proceed with a grant application, steering committee is a requirement of that process. So that's where I'd go with that. But like I said, starting in, say, July, this process would likely take about a year.
Yeah, Mr. President. At some point, I'd like to have us talk about going to our six o'clock schedule. When we were working on the master plan review, we started that review meeting at six. And I think that's more useful of our time to try to schedule that hour of work before the regular planning board meeting, if we have applicants. Take as example our last meeting, where we, we went a long time with our applicants, and we still had work to do, so it made for a very late evening. But it's up, it's, I don't know what other people's schedules are, getting here by six. I would just like to bring it up. I found that that hour-long period of time kept us on track in getting the master plan work done. And, and how does that work with you, Mike, in preparing for, for this work?
Yeah, I think it's, I think the more sensitive group are the, are the planning board members.
Right.
I'm here at six o'clock regardless, because I'm not going to go home and come back. But it would be more up to the planning board, what their sensitivity is.
Well, I think it would be beneficial to make a decision, given, you know, I, I believe wholeheartedly that the sooner we get this done, the better we're all going to be.
Detroit.
So I'd like just to find out from the planning board members if they are able to make that commitment, just meet at six until we get this done, because it has been a long time trying to get that first item off our books.
And then no matter what or how busy our, our regular meeting might be, we still know we've committed at least an hour every meeting to working on this.
So I don't know how, what the rest of the board feels. During the summer, it's pretty hard. I have a tough time getting out earlier from work sometimes, so I might not be able to make that, but I can definitely try.
Well, it's either...
Kind of going to be my situation during the summer also. If I can make it, I'll be here, but there's times when I work till six, 6:30, just to wait.
So point is, if you got here at seven for a regular meeting where we have to make votes, during that work session, we don't necessarily have to make votes, do we?
Not necessarily, no. And we could plan on having a dedicated work session in one of the two meetings each month.
Sure.
So that's more, you can, that folks with the schedules could anticipate it and not be docked for asking every other week off, or however it might be.
Mr. Chairman, the other option would be just to have a subcommittee of the planning board work on site plan regulations, and then when they're final, when they've finished their work, bring it before the whole planning board for discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, much like we did with the CIP Subcommittee.
Mm-hmm.
Because I know everybody has different schedules and different commitments, so that would be another way to do it.
Is there any other thoughts?
As long as those days could be held all night, so I could make home.
I get home at four every day, so I'm kind of like banker's hours.
Yeah.
[laughing].
So is that something we need to do, we don't have, need to decide that tonight, correct, or do we?
We don't. I think we, we start the process and see, let's see where the site plan regulations look. I would say at the full board level, see how they look and decide whether it warrants a subcommittee or special meeting, being a six o'clock timeframe.
One of the feelings I have, I guess, about a subcommittee versus the whole board, if the whole board can participate in working on these regulations, it helps us all learn about them, and, and helps, allows us all to participate, you know, with our opinions and ideas. You can go either way. This is pretty broad stuff, and I think all of us involved would be, it would benefit all of us.
I definitely agree with that.
I agree with that. Six o'clock, for whatever reason, seems to be just really pushing it to get here, but as long as we have an agenda and we're focused on what we're doing and don't go off on other paths, you know, maybe we could limit it to just the weeks where we have something to discuss, to be here at six, so...
Well, that's true, so...
Do our best effort.
It could be conditional. If there is a case on the agenda...
Right.
We would do a six o'clock work session, otherwise it'd be a seven o'clock meeting.
That would seem to make sense.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And if everybody likes that idea, then they just make that decision this evening, that's how we'll proceed.
Uh-huh. Do we need to vote on that, or...
No.
No?
No.
We don't?
The opinion has been voiced.
Right.
So I, I don't know what else. I think this, I think it was important enough to have this meeting, first of all, because it's required to have one meeting a month, and we don't know, we don't have any applications in for the next meeting. And I want you to know where things are going with the land use regulations. This is all, this is all very much based on what the master plan has. These, these are still consistent with the master plan. They are very important. So these predate the master plan almost. But I would say that this one's going to be most heavily reliant on the master plan findings, and I'm, I'm actually pretty excited about that one personally. It's going to be something I'd really like to see happen.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
The last time we worked on signs, I think, was the city center project.
Right.
We spent a lot of time on signs.
That's right. And that's where the bulk of the work related to an amended sign ordinance was, was done. And so taking it back and getting the new decision and how it applies to the sign ordinance, I think there are a lot of things. We run into signage issues a lot.
Like what kind of issues? Size?
Size, placement, you know, we need clarity on what constitutes a sign. The old ordinance is, is not totally clear on that. We also have, I feel, in the historic district, there is a... We also have, I feel, in the historic district, there is a, there's an overlap between the zoning ordinance and what the historic district commission does. And I want to, I want to develop a process where the zoning administrator review of signs and the HTC review of signs mesh together rather than duplicate, because right now they duplicate.
So, does the historic district have the final say on signs in their area?
They do.
Over what?
You may have.
The HTC has rate, has power over the appearance and, and not the placement, but the appearance of signs.
Right. Just the appearance of the sign.
Just the appearance.
Yeah. So incorporating that into sign permit review, because we, I think the bulk of our sign permit applications have been from the downtown lately. A lot of the other ones have been either replacements or maintenance. So, it's been, it's something that I think, let's just say we need to get done.
Mr. Putnam?
So, after the city center ordinance was passed, I know there was an applicant that wanted to put up a bigger sign on their building, and they went to the zoning board for a variance.
Yes.
And, but they still had to get approval from the historic district commission.
Correct.
And then, if I remember correctly, they had to grant a variance that made, allowed the use of the sign to be bigger than what was allowed in that district. And it was because of the size of the building and how, from how far away people would be seeing the sign.
The, right, so-
They didn't do a variance, so.
No.
You did not?
So, in the review process, what happens is if it's not consistent with the zoning ordinance and would otherwise be denied, either verbally or in writing, I, the zoning administrator, issue a determination. They appeal that determination in the application of a variance, but that's to the zoning board of adjustment. Once that variance is granted, it's approved to go forward to the HTC for review. We sometimes try to work with the applicant where there's conditional approval, to say, if the zoning board approves the variance, then they need a HTC permit. If the HTC, or certificate of appropriateness, if the HTC certifies the sign's appropriate, they need a variance. So, you know, we do that cross-check. But like I said, in a typical sign situation, there is some overlap that I would rather an historic district sign go straight to the HTC and that be done, rather than having to do a separate sign permit. But that's just one example. There are other, other situations with signage that we need to rectify. Placement, size, current and new technologies, a whole bunch of different things. So, we'd be looking at that in here. In the context of, you can't read the sign to determine what the sign is for, you know, if it's allowable. You can't, so if I were to look at the sign up behind you guys on the wall right there, I would not be able to read the letters to determine whether the sign was appropriate. That's what the, effectively what the Supreme Court said. I could look at the shape and the color, but the message is neutral. So, that's how we have to revamp our, yeah.
That's easy.
Yeah, that's, that's my life. Can't discriminate based on a sign's message, except in some cases.
Interesting.
Any other questions, or, oh, it's this time?
All right, let's move on to reports from boards and commissions then. Nothing? Other?
I have a number of things. So, I think, I know you did, Mr. Chairman, but I don't know if the rest of the planning board, I can't remember, if the rest of the planning board members, I think, yes, that's true. Because Mr. McCrory sent it. That was the, the council rescheduled the CIP for Wednesday, April 11th. And the reason for that was things were added to the agenda, and Mr. McCrory had one late night on Monday night, and I knew it would be another late night if we had that on the 28th of March, so we just moved it. So, that'll be addressed Wednesday. And, did you want to talk about the letter that you received from the city council?
So, I don't have it in front of me. Oh, where is this? Are we talking about, which one are we talking about? Are we talking about the capital improvement?
Which one do you have?
I've got the one from, it says capital improvement program.
No, no, no.
So, are you, you asked me earlier, right?
Right. So, the city council, basically what happened is I wrote, I drafted a letter that was reviewed by the city council. They approved it, and basically it was sent out to every chair of every board, commission, and committee. And it was an outline from the city council, what they would like to see as improvements between the city council and the various board commissions and committees. And that was supposed to be chaired by the entire, with each, the chair was supposed to share it with each member of their respective committee, board, or commission.
Right.
And the intent, in a nutshell, is to improve communication between those various boards, committees, and commissions and the city council both ways. And to open up opportunities for training. So, and that way to make everybody's time that they're volunteering and giving to the city by serving on these various boards, committees, and commissions, that is time well-spent, and the work that they're doing is being utilized at the city council level. So, that was the intent of the letter. So, I would request that the next meeting that we put it on the agenda so that we can discuss it.
That sounds fine.
The letter that I wrote on October 9th still hasn't been discussed in detail. Perhaps some of that discussion will happen when we have a review of the site plan regulations, because I know some of the questions raised in that letter would deal with those site plan regulations. At our meeting on March 28th, the city council was asked to approve a rental agreement for the parking spaces in connection with, with the Goddard block renovation. And the, basically, the rental agreement, we didn't see it at the time, but we were asked to approve it because the developer was having to close on April 6th. So, we weren't, weren't going to have our next city council meeting until after his closing date. When we were asked to approve the rental agreement, at that point in time, Mr. LaCasse was there at the council meeting. We were told that the reconstruction is going to entail 36 apartments, and that they would need an additional 22 rental parking, 22 additional parking spaces to meet the one parking per unit variance that they were granted. So, one of the city councilors asked, well, please let the planning board know about this, and perhaps they need to review the site application, because when we were presented with this project in September, it was with the, with the intent that there would be 30 to 32 units within the reconstruction. Now, we're up to 36. So, that's that update.
Okay. And I think that one of the things that I somewhat suspected that we'll, we'll see that, we'll see that playing again at some point myself, but wasn't one of our conditions of approval that there was an agreed-upon number of spaces per unit? Not, not how many spaces in all for the building, but that there were a certain number of spaces per unit?
No.
I think we granted that there would be one. So, our regulations require more than one space per unit?
May I respond?
Yep.
So, the ordinance is currently say 1.5 spaces per unit. They went to the ZBA, they got a, and were granted a variance for one parking space per unit. So, the rental, when they spoke with us in September, with 30 to 32 apartments, with, if you remember, they said that they would range from two-bedroom to studio apartments with, because of their funding package, it was required that 25% of their apartments would be two-bedroom units. The, what we were given at that point in time, because they were looking at 30 or 32, they were looking at 17, they needed 17 additional parking spaces. When we approved the site amendment, it was with a conditional, condition that they would not be given a certificate of occupancy unless that parking situation had been-
Addressed.
Addressed correctly.
Right.
So, what they did is they went to the city, the city council before the planning board ever met with the developer, said to the city administration, we know we have a down, a parking issue downtown. We are asking you to come up with a plan because we want to, whatever we decide for this one particular project, we want to be fair across the board. So, I know there was, has been work from the city administration side where they're trying to look at, well, what is the, the right solution? And I know they've looked at a parking garage as a potential solution, but that didn't pan out because it's just too expensive. In the meantime, this, this developer wants to move forward with his recon, reconstruction of the Goddard block, and he has a closing date. Because we, if you recall, he said, it makes it more difficult for me to get my financing package together and approved when you put longer and longer lists of conditions on it.
Right.
Because we, and it's not that we did anything wrong, it's fine. But he could not close without a agreement signed by the council that says you have these parking spaces. If that's your, because they're not going to invest that kind of money into a project if it, so. But anyway, be that as it may, that rental agreement has been voted upon by the city council and approved. He still has to fulfill the condition, which is, you know, that rental, those parking spaces have to be allotted to that project. But now, when you first heard about it, it was 17. Now, it's up to 22 because the number of apartments increased.
Question for Mike?
Yep.
So, I guess I want clarity on, I hear from Charlene that the council has voted on certain parts of this project, and the planning board has a condition of approval, which has a stipulation in order for them to have a certificate of occupancy. So, how do these different jurisdictions play in on making the final decision on them moving ahead?
Well, I guess what this boils down to, from a planning board perspective, is that, and I haven't, this is, this is not something I was made aware of, so I haven't prepared for the question. But let's just presume that there were 32 units approved in the original proposal. If it stepped up to 34, 36 units, does, according to this board, that constitute a substantial change to the site plan? That's, that's the question I have to ask the board.
Well, it depends on what our motion was.
Since we're talking at the board level, usually this is staff activity of determining whether there's a substantial change to an approved site plan. But all we're talking about now, might as well put it to you guys. What do you think?
Well, I, I remember talking about the motion, and I vaguely remember that I might have been the one making the motion on the conditions of approval, that we not give them an occupancy permit unless they met the requirements for parking.
You were.
And, and so, I didn't say in that motion how many apartments there were. Only, we only knew at the time what the applicant was asking for. And I guess I want to know is, with the change in the number of apartments, does that mean we have to change our vote or motion to accommodate the additional parking, different number of apartments? Or can that motion still stand, accepting the fact that they've increased the number of apartments, so now there has to be more parking available to meet the regulations for those new apartments?
Well, I would think that if they're increasing the apartments, they would have to increase the parking.
Yep.
And I think the way it was presented to us was that it was something that was, the city was working with them on. So, I'm assuming that right out, that that's what, that's what's going on.
It seems awkward to me, because it seems like everything's being cobbled together here-
Right.
-to make it work. And that's putting a lot of pressure on people.
I, I would, let's just say, I would expect that this to be the only time you see a proposal come to the planning board or the city council this way. There is a very vigorous effort to deal with the parking downtown right now. I have personal experience. Do you have the notice? Okay. Yeah, just, but the, I have DeForest queue up the notice of decisions so we're all in the same place. It does, in my mind, since the zoning board granted a variance for one space per unit, and we did have a general understanding at the time of the application, how many units there would be, that the increase in the number of units does change, you know, it has changed. I go back to my statement of, very simply, is that substantial change to the site plan? Is that something that the planning board feels needs to come back before the board for an amendment? Because when we talk about substantial change, we're talking about site plan amendment. If you could, could you read the full notice of decision?
Sure. The Claremont Planning Board, at its meeting of September 25th, 2017, and after due public hearing duly noticed, completed its consideration of the application for site plan approval for the property located at 54 to 62 Pleasant Street and shown as Tax Map 120 Lot 85, lying in the mixed-use zoning district. The Claremont Planning Board approved site plan review for a mixed-use renovation with the following conditions of approval. One, the proposed site plan shall be completed substantially in accordance with the information provided by the applicant in the site plan application case number PL 2017-00009, and testimony during the public hearing for said case. Number two, the site shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the plan titled, quote, "Goddard Block Revitalization, 54 to 62 Pleasant Street, Claremont, New Hampshire," end quote, dated July 21st, 2017, and as amended. Additional drawings that have been reviewed to be submitted to the planning board and city staff schematic floor plans prepared by Barrett Architecture, pages 1, 2, and 3, dated August 1st, 2017. Three, the applicant shall obtain all necessary permits as determined by the local, state, and federal governments. Four, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the owner slash applicant shall notify the zoning administrator and building inspector that the project is ready for final inspection. Completion of the project shall be in substantial compliance with the plan submitted for review and all conditions of approval. If the planning and development department staff determine the changes are substantial and warrant planning board review, then the applicant shall submit for site plan amendment. For A, certificate of occupancy is to be delivered when the project is completed and appropriate parking is identified. Five, this site plan is valid for two years from the date of approval. If a certificate of occupancy has not been issued before the two-year deadline, the site plan is no longer valid and must be recertified through the planning board. Number six, two copies of the final approved overall site plan printed on Mylar and in a form suitable for recording at the Sullivan County Registry of Deeds shall be provided to the Claremont Planning and Development Department.
Now, one thing that the notice doesn't specify, and we'll do that, we'll deal, deal with that internally for future applications. deal, deal with that internally for future applications, the recollect, the, the, do you have the minutes available at that meeting?
What was the date of the meeting?
September 25th.
I did read that.
And the test, the testimony that was provided, the folks present, it was 32 units, is that right?
Thirty to 32, I reviewed the minutes before we, we had the vote at the council about the, and I also reviewed the tape.
Okay. So, if we have 32 and it's now 36, the question stands, is that substantial change?
I'd also like...
I, I kind of, myself, I kind of think that if the appropriate parking is provided, no.
Well, it depends.
That's...
Depends, we have to look now at the zoning board's variance approval was, if they said how many parking spots for how many bedrooms, because it was one car per bedroom.
One, no, it's
No.
One and a half per unit, standard.
Doesn't matter how many bedrooms are in it?
No, it's per unit.
It's per unit.
Okay. So, so does, did they indicate a number of 30 to 32, or did it just leave it open that if you have 32, or 36, or 29 apartments, that's one parking spot per apartment?
That was, basically, when I did the zoning analysis for that, and my recollection of the ZBA hearing itself, it was one unit, one space per unit.
And that would stand up in court? So, if we told them they needed 36 spots, they would comply with that without contesting it?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I need to hear.
And I, like I said, I, I think that the way it was presented is that somehow, I mean, we've got to think outside the box a little bit with what we've got downtown. No question for parking. And that it was presented that they would have, that now it goes into, into code enforcement as far as if they go with 36 units, they're going to have to provide 36 parking.
But...
That's way, unless, unless it goes back to the zoning board, my thought, but...
But, I don't think we're talking about the question that Mr. McCrory is asking, it's not about the parking.
Right, he's asking, do we need to reveal it?
Review the site plan because, well, actually
Is that worth an amendment?
What Ms. Beers read, if you recall, when they came in September, the schematic that we got was, I believe, just an external schematic. There wasn't any other schematics. And at that point in time, I think I raised the question about, well, where are the other, where are the floor plans? We don't have anything.
So, I mean...
And it was based on a site plan, this, the original, when we were presented with it, it was a site plan amendment to a site plan that was dated back in the 1980s.
So, I mean, I, I can honestly say that I, when I build a building, and I've got an architectural set of prints, I'm working on one from Banwell, we, we changed it, we added more offices to it. And that didn't go back in front of the planning board up in Lebanon. That was an internal change, and it just went through code enforcement, and it wasn't a big deal. So, when you're dealing with a project of this size, it's not unusual to see it go up, go up or down, a little bap in the high school.
Yeah, I guess I'd concur with that, but I'm kind of wondering where the, where the breakpoint is. Is it usual or customary, I don't know the size of the building that you were building, but over here with no increase in the footprint of, of the space, to have an increase in the number of units of between 15 and 20%?
Well, it would become
Is that...
It would become a code enforcement thing, because it would fall on, on their square footage of each unit.
But then what drives it back here for a revised site plan?
The only thing that drives it back here perhaps is if they don't come up with the appropriate number of parking spots, then would it, then they're not granted their occupancy permit, so then it would have to come back to us, wouldn't it?
Well, I think, I mean, let's, let's step back a little bit and think about when a site plan amendment on a traditional new construction site is usually required. Let's say, company B wants to build a widget manufacturing building, and they propose 35,000 square feet. If they then bump it up to 40,000 square feet, that might not be a substantial change, but if they double it to 70,000 square feet, that would be a substantial change. In the current site plan regulations, they, there is some guidance on this, and it's not necessarily in the context of what we're talking right now. But it is based on increased square footage of the footprint of the building. We're not talking about increased square footage of the footprint of the building.
No.
So, in this case, it is, it's a quirky little area where we're talking about the intensity of the use of the building. There's an existing building, it's going, it, it had, started with 26 units, they put it up to 32. They found in their subsequent design analysis, they could get an extra four out of it, so they added those four to their design. And, and that's something that, you know, was, was revealed when that parking agreement was being discussed. The, the fundamental difference, I think, is the number of parking spaces that are being reserved for, for use. And I can't recall the general parameters of the lease agreement, but that is an overnight reservation, and I believe they need to be open for use during the day to promote shared use of those spaces. But what that fundamentally does is overnight use is an extra four spaces over, you know, for, for the benefit of the park, of the apartment building. There would be additional, so let's think about other uses, or other intensive, other results of that intensity. So, we've got increased parking, we might have increased water and sewer usage.
Yeah.
But those are covered by impact fees and regular usage fees. And that's effectively underground. We have a built environment around this building, so we already have a sidewalk, we already have walkways, we already have, the interior of the building is going to be totally revamped.
But the back is going to change.
I'm sorry?
The back is going to change.
Um...
Are you talking about landscaping the back and exits and...
Right, yeah, there, there's, and that's, that's all existing hardscapes, so there is a benefit to the site by increased landscaping. But those additional four units, I don't believe are going to change that, that layout. So, it's a question of, with those additional four units, if it, with those considerations and with the, you know, and quite honestly, let's step back, we'll step forward a little bit to this particular case, but get a little bit broader perspective. My understanding is that the intent was to get all this parking stuff confirmed and finalized before CL. That's, that's probably a year out, so there was time to work on it some more. Unfortunately, I think when the closing was approaching, the attorneys for the applicant stepped up and said, "We need the agreement now, before the closing." And that put us in a bit of a tight spot. So, that was unanticipated. So, that's why I think that got rushed to the city council, not in ideal fashion, and certainly something that we, we hope to remedy before any future proposals like this come before any boards. But, we then step back to, when we think of the impact of the additional four residential units, do they substantially change the character of the site plan that was approved?
No.
And if it, if it were me, I mean, I'm, I'm putting this to the board, I want the board to decide this. If, I, personally, my professional opinion is that considering the existing landscape, the existing building, the no change in footprint, and quite honestly, the approval from city council, I would say there's no substantial change.
Yep, Mr. Punda.
Do we know where the four apartments, where they found, where they're going to put them?
Yeah, we'll be...
Because I believe the board also says the front of that building on the first, on the ground level, has to stay
Storefront.
storefronts.
It is.
They're not...
It's staying forefront.
Okay.
Storefront.
Now, with that being said, are we going to see a set of plans come to the board that shows the final layout of where these units are going to be before they start building?
That is before the building inspectors. So, that's being reviewed as part of the building permit process.
Will we see it though, is the question? Will we have to...
There was, there was no plan to present those. I mean, typically, when we, for example, with the Ford dealership, we're not presenting the floor plans to the Ford dealership. Or for jewel, trucking, we're not presenting the floor plans for the, for the building that's being constructed. So, I, I don't see how that's relevant to the site plan.
Yep.
We, we have a number of units in the, in the building.
I think we can all agree that we want this particular project to succeed, and I think all the boards and so on have proven that, just simply by the actions they've taken. I guess if I think back to the initial presentation, when the architect was here and so forth, I think stating it rather kindly, the drawings and plans we saw that night were pretty rough. Perhaps not the type that we would imagine seeing every single time, but we went ahead with it because we want this to be succeeding. We don't yet have a question, before I have another question, is the parking plan, or the rental agreement, is that, has that been reduced to writing yet?
I don't have an answer for you right now. I can get back to you on that, I don't, I don't know. I, I would, what I do know is that a draft lease agreement is, I mean, seeing that the closing was last Friday, I would say it's
Should have been.
Everything went through, and it went through attorneys on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't, I have not personally seen that, it has not gone past me.
Well, I, I think certainly as far as the city council was concerned, when we had to make our vote, that was one of the questions I think most of us had, that gee, it sure would help if we knew what that rental agreement looked like, other than varying opinions or thoughts and so on. Again, we all want the project to move ahead, so we voted for it, but it was with one of these, and I think we just need to see it in writing. Is, is the site plan regs that, that we're going to be seeing, will that provide us guidance as best as possible regarding how to approach questions like we're having here tonight? If there's a question with a site plan, is it substantial? Is it not substantial?
It actually changes. It, it, the, the new regulations would change this process, the, the determination of substantial change. For example, in this case, the board might opt to kick it to a technical review committee to review and discuss, and then render a determination. If the technical review committee found that their, the, the case, for whatever reason, needed to have full planning board review, then it would be passed on to the planning board. But, so in this kind of situation, I think that's where it would probably go in the process. This is an unusual conversation for this kind of thing. But, question back to the city council review. I recall discussing with Nancy Merrill that she had intended to review the parameters of the lease agreement with the city council, was that presented?
She, she did, but it was all, again, it was all an oral presentation. We had simply wanted to say, "This is pretty serious and affects a number of things related to this project." It sure would help if we could see it in writing sooner rather than later. And as you stated, if, if they've already gone to closing and the attorneys have approved all the various pieces, it should be in writing, and it sure would help if we got a copy of it.
I'll have to ask.
And then there was lack of clarity on some of the variables within the rental agreement
True.
Because there's discussion back and forth.
Which can all be cleaned up once we see it in writing.
Okay.
Yep, Mr. Punda.
So, you made a comment a few moments ago, Mike, in that after we had made our ruling and had declared that they could continue the project, but would not be given the occupancy of approve, approval occupancy until the parking was satisfied, meaning that they had to go ahead to secure the project and start working on it. But then you told us the lawyer stepped in and required decision made. So, is it likely that lawyers would step ahead of our decision in the future? And I'm wondering how much we would have to anticipate other legal decisions in the future when complicated projects like this come along?
I'm going to say something. My dad was a lawyer. Many of my good friends are lawyers.
Mine too.
Lawyers are like sharks.
Yep. I agree with you. We had one here.
You can never anticipate what they're going to do.
Remember the guy with the parking lot, parking mall?
So, so let's just say, you can never anticipate what an attorney is going to do, and this surprised everybody. So, we can try to, to the best of our ability, prepare for it, and I think we will be okay 75 to 95% of the time. But something's going to happen once in a while.
Yep.
And unfortunately, the profile of this specific instant was, is pretty high. So, I think that's why it's getting the attention it's getting.
Yep.
We, we've run into this with other lesser cases where an attorney steps in and says, "Oh, wait, 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 we need this." And it's usually been in the context of a subdivision, a minor subdivision, a property transfer, something like that, that it needed to be resolved, but then never makes the paper. And so, based on that experience, I'd say, I'd count on it 50% of the time.
Yep. So, I'd like to go back for a moment to what Charlene was in, in her little list of other things, and we talked about the letters that went back and forth a little. And I want to remember, when we did our restructuring this year, at the beginning of the year, we talked about who was going to handle correspondence and how it would be provided to the board. And, because, because I don't want to lose, I don't want to sway or wave, away from what we all agreed upon. And so, I, I remember that we discussed that all correspondence to the board would come through the planning office, in, in that if the chairman or the vice chair received something in the mail, they would forward it to DeForest, and then it would be provided to us.
See, the way, way I, I read the letter was that I thought it was addressed more to me.
Okay.
And that basically, I needed to do some homework and present some, a little outline of where the planning board was and what it was, needed to do and, and so forth. That's kind of, was adjusted, I took from it.
Yep.
I'm not good sometimes in my homework.
No, I'm not trying to put you up against the wall
Yep.
At all. But I just, but I just want to be clear, I guess any letter that we, that you receive or I would receive, that it's intended for the whole board.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that, and that, yeah, because Charlene's expecting that we would have already seen it
Mm-hmm.
As part of our correspondence.
I would say though, if letters addressed to the chair of a board, for example, any letter that I write to the city council is to the mayor and the members of the city council.
Yep.
If I intended something for just the mayor, I'd address it just to the mayor. So, maybe there is a misinterpretation of how the letter was intended.
Yep.
I don't have it burnt into my memory, but I think it was addressed to just boards, committees, and commissions, and then the request to the council clerk was send it out to the chairs of each entity. Because you have to have a point of contact.
Right, right. And that's the appropriate point of contact.
And it, in all honesty, I think that our, our path is pretty clear on where, where the board is going at this point, as far as what we're, what we're doing and so on.
Well, I would, I, I don't want to spend a lot, it just, if we could put it on the agenda for next time, so, and have it in the packet for the planning board members, and then we can have a discussion at that point. Because there is more to talk about. But nobody's seen it, so it's
Right.
Kind of not productive tonight, that's all. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. But back, I have one final thing to say about the site plan amendment, and how it may be different from a floor plan for a Ford dealership, or whatever the other example or whatever the other example was. When that, when that application came before us, from a global perspective, we're looking at a project with rental housing for, you know, we've had lots of conversations about workforce housing and all this other stuff. And from a global perspective, we're trying to look at the community's planning purposes. How are we going to get this type of housing into the community? And does this project push that needle forward? So when we don't have plans, schematics of the internals of how many units, what's the percentage of studios to one bedrooms to two bedrooms, then you, we as a board really don't know what the final outcome of this project is going to be. And...
But you, I don't think you can really expect that out of a project of this size. I think if you turn around and take the percentage of change in the amount of people in that building, it's pretty minute. So now, now we're trying to micromanage a project that we somewhat already approved. So that's why we have our code enforcement folks, to be able to make sure that it stays within the parameters of what it's been approved.
I disagree, but that brings me to my next point, which is, I think we spend a lot of time not being sure of certain things. And we are, all of us, the City Council, the land use boards, do not have legal counsel on site. And sometimes we run into a situation in which it would be quite helpful to have that. Because I don't think we're always certain of what our authority is, what our responsibilities are, or what we should be looking at when we go through...
I don't know. I think that would only slow things down more if I...
I'm just saying, on these especially high-profile, big projects where there's a lot of money at stake, people are putting a lot of resources and time into something, it might be beneficial to have legal counsel here. And the land use boards do have that authority to request legal counsel, to be present. And I just want to give you that information, because I think this is about educating ourselves. And I'd also, in addition to all the work that we have to do, you know, that's part of the letter, what are the training opportunities? Because to be the best board that we can be requires us to, you know, take some time to be trained on different situations.
I have a question. Mayor, do they have all the required parking spaces now that they need for all the units? That they're going, the 36 units that they have?
They will, they have, yes, through the rental agreement that was approved by the City Council, yeah.
So if I may respond quickly. I think we had this conversation when we developed the rules of procedure, that planning board members are encouraged to understand those applications that are before them, and are encouraged to ask questions and inquire and request more information. I'll be totally honest, I feel like my presence here as staff and professional in this field is not appreciated with that statement.
Says...
I, I mean, if you have a question, ask me. And I can find that answer.
What statement weren't you happy with, Mike?
Mine.
This one?
It's a question of the attorney.
Oh, about having the attorney here?
Right. I was thinking the same thing.
Right, I agree.
So I'll just make a comment on that. First of all, you're greatly appreciated in your knowledge. From a cost-saving perspective, I personally don't feel, I feel we should always try other avenues before we bring in an attorney. But I do feel that if we have a question or a lack of understanding and you can't answer it, certainly we should be able to take it to an attorney.
And I don't disagree with that. Regardless, we're not going to have an attorney standing here at every meeting. We're going to have a continuance where there's an inquiry made. And I would be the one forwarding that inquiry.
And I don't want to speak for Charlene, but I don't think you meant to have an attorney here at every meeting, did you?
That wasn't my intent.
So I think we have a bit of miscommunication.
I apologize if you took offense. I am specifically thinking about issues in which the applicants here, there is no legal counsel here. You're not a lawyer. And I'm not, and that's not a hit against you. But sometimes we are in, the council's in the same situation, too. And we don't have a legal counsel available at that point in time to get an answer. And sometimes if we're talking about efficiency and being proactive, when you have an applicant, you know, the more, I'm not talking about every time, but the more complicated ones, the ones that just, there is, there is as many opportunities for complications as pitfalls in these high-profile, complex issues, that sometimes it would behoove us. And it's a planning board decision, because they, the planning board can call legal counsel to be there. But it's not, it's not a hit against your expertise as a city planner.
See, I don't really see this project as being that complicated. I mean, you're doing 30, 30 units from a construction standpoint. And whether you're doing 30 or 32 or 36, what you're really talking about is that what you can fit. I mean, any architect wants to turn around and fit as many units as he can into what space he has. And that's a given. And then you've got to give a quality of living.
Okay, we have different opinions here. All I know is other councils, other cities, other planning boards do have this at certain times. It is to their benefit. It is not anything against the expertise or the qualifications of the people in the room. It's an attempt to try to get issues resolved on site. And we have this at the City Council level at times. It happens.
I haven't seen it here.
I am bringing you information, that's all. If you want to use it, fine. It wasn't meant as a slam.
All right. So I think we should, have we beat this down enough?
Yep.
All right. Is there any other?
I do have a couple of other things.
Yep.
So first of all, final call, April 28th. There's an OSI conference, and that's a training opportunity. The city will cover registration, contact DeForest, and she can help get you enrolled, signed up. I don't, she'll have to work through the process with you of how that signing up needs to go. But I think we need to, if you want to go, if you're interested, and David, this is something I forgot to mention last week, but it is on the 28th. It's an all-day conference in Concord. And it's geared towards land use boards, municipal land use boards. So it's a very valuable event. And DeForest can help you register. The city covers the registration, not the travel. And there is breakfast and lunch included.
So I just have one question on that. It's the fourth year in a row that I just cannot go because of other obligations. Do they tape it? Can, is there any sort of online course? I feel like, yes, it would be incredibly beneficial. Is there anyone that I can check with?
Well, in fact, I think, I was actually talking with folks at NHMA a couple of weeks ago, and we were talking about my participation in trainings like this. And so I was thinking about how I could take these trainings here first and then pick them up and take them on the road if needed. So first thing is that I spoke with the city manager, and this is under other. So having our municipal attorneys come in for a training session has been discussed. And so that might be, you know, this is the next thing under the other that the city manager offered, and I gladly accepted the municipal attorney's time to do a training session. I would see it as a joint session between zoning and planning board. But I just want to let you know that that's in the works right now, regardless of whether you can make it on the 28th. I mean, we're just working on timing right now. So that's, so we've got a couple of training opportunities. I would defer, I would try to get the attorneys here as soon as possible. We have to find a common date and see if zoning board members would rather come join you guys at a meeting on one of your meeting dates. Even conservation commission, I think we talked about, and other boards, maybe UHDC as well. Just basically open up the, open up...
Mr. McQuarrie, which, who are, who are you talking about doing the training?
Gardner Fulton Waugh.
Yes, because this is part of the letter that I sent out to all of the boards committees and commissions and the council. That was, so it's the same thing.
Okay.
With the council has already...
I haven't seen this letter, so I didn't...
Oh. Okay.
So...
So it's the, what it is, is Gardner Fulton Waugh have offered a two-hour free session to the City Council and the land use boards for legal updates. So the council discussed potential dates. And then I have to de-conflict the days that each of the land use boards meet, and then figure out what is the best day. So you'll be getting a letter from the City Council that'll say, "What are these potential dates?" And Mary, that you'll already know from the letter what is available with the firm. And then if you can come, you can come. But it is free.
Is that different than the planning board, zoning board training?
I, I'll have to double-check with the city manager what his intent was. But I understand that session is free. But I don't know how much overlap there is between City Council and land use boards, but I'll check up on it.
Okay.
So that's, I think that's it.
Correspondence?
Correspondence. Healthy Vibrant Clermont is featured in here. We have Mr. Putnam and the mayor in pictures. There's a picture of them. And it's about Healthy Vibrant Clermont and what they're doing. So I thought that'd be a nice thing to showcase.
Yes.
Thank you. We had a wonderful day yesterday at the Upper Valley tasting...
Oh, Tasty Upper Valley.
Yep, Tasty Upper Valley. It's 45 vendors, and I have to say, there was a vendor from Clem out there.
Awesome.
Jeff Barrett with the Pesto.
Ooh.
He's handing out samples left and right. He was seriously busy. Any other correspondence?
No.
All right. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
We're adjourned.